Welcome to the Montgomery County School Board Forum this afternoon, and we welcome each and every one of you. I'm Debbie Travis. I'm president of the Montgomery County, Rapid City, Floyd County branch of the NAACP. And this is Gunan Karan, who's the president of the League of Women Voters of Montgomery County. We welcome you here tonight. I'd also like to introduce to you our political action chair for the NAACP, who is Karen Jones, and she's out here. She's up there. And Peggy Lane, who is Road to Services Chair of the League of Women Voters. I'd like to thank all of the members of each organization who have helped to put this program together for you. The League of Women Voters and the NAACP are nonpartisan organizations, and our goal is to bring information and education to the community regarding your voting rights, where to go to vote, and also so that you have the opportunity to meet the candidates. So that's what we're doing tonight. So welcome to all of you, and thank you for taking the time out to come and be with us and to be introduced to the candidates. I would like to say that Mr. Jason Massey, who is one of the candidates, could not be with us tonight, but each of the candidates here will introduce themselves, so you will get to know each of them. I also would like to let you know that tonight, I hope there will be lots of questions that you have. We have runners who will pick up your cards on the questions, and they will bring them to the persons who are sorting the questions so that your questions can be answered. We're going to try to get through as many as we can. We hope to get you out of here by 8:30. So please write your questions on your cards, and if you need cards, the ladies in the back have them available for you. At this time, I would like to introduce our moderator. Our moderator is Dr. Brandy Faulkner, who is a professor of political science and Afrika studies at Virginia Tech. She is working hard in the community and across the state in various state and local organizations working for equity and community-based change. So without further ado, please help me welcome Dr. Brandy Faulkner.
Well, good evening to everybody. Hope everybody's doing well today. Tonight's candidate forum includes candidates running for a seat on the Montgomery County School Board for districts B and E, F, and G. And our candidates are Penny Franklin and Mark Meyer for District B, Derek Roundtree for District E, Laura Purcell for District F, and Ed JK Gitra for District G. I'd like to review the process that we will follow as we continue for this evening. In preparation for tonight's forum, candidates were provided with five questions. I'll ask just a couple of those, but all other questions will come from you, the audience. You should have received some note cards to submit your questions. If you would like one and you haven't received one, please just raise your hand, and one of our hosts will be sure to bring you a card. And if you have one that you would like to submit, also raise your hand, and someone will come to get it. To our audience watching on the Montgomery County YouTube channel, we are so sorry, but we are not monitoring for questions. All questions submitted will be screened for duplication and also for variety, and to ensure that the questions that are asked are relevant to the decisions that a school board member can make. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves and to explain why they're running for office. And then I'll begin with a couple of questions. I'll rotate the order in which the questions are asked among the candidates. Each of the candidates will have up to two minutes to answer each of the questions. The timekeeper will notify the candidate when they have one minute left to answer, and then 30 seconds. And the red flag means it's time to stop. And she does not play. Finally, each candidate will have two minutes to make a closing statement. During the closing statement, candidates may address any previously asked questions. Voters have a right to make informed decisions. So please, candidates, be honest and be transparent when you are responding to their questions. So if we are ready to begin, we'll start with introductions, and we'll begin with Laura.
Okay. Do I need to press? The mic is live? We're good?
It's live.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Public education is a miracle, but it's not magic. My name is Laura Purcell, and I represent District F. And I said those words almost a year ago today as I stood in front of the school board in support of improving teacher working conditions and student learning conditions. Like a lot of people, I had been kind of naive about public education. I just assumed that smart people would do the right thing. What I have learned in the last year is just how fragile our public education system is in our community, in the Commonwealth, and in the country. My family was really intentional about moving to Montgomery County 15 years ago. While it was in part because of a job opportunity, we felt that the community and especially the public schools would provide my then-two-year-old son with the kind of education and opportunities that my husband and I did not have when we were growing up. Now, that two-year-old is almost 18, and he is here tonight. He's working hard toward his goals for after-graduation, goals that he can reach because of the education and the support that he's had at MCPS. He's here to support me tonight, and as a bonus, his government teacher is giving extra credit to students who came out, so it's a win-win. I'm a parent. I have two children, one at Blacksburg Middle School and one at Blacksburg High School. They both attended Gilbert-Lincoln. I have had a career in media, professional, and technical communication, and I'm a Hokie. And for the last six years, I've taught first-year writing, public speaking, and media writing through the School of Communication at Virginia Tech. And I'm running for school board because I think public education is important. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Laura, and Laura is running in District F. Next is Derek.
Hi. Good evening, Montgomery County. My name is Derek Roundtree, and I am running for school board in District E. First, let me thank the League of Women Voters and NAACP for having us here tonight to discuss the importance of good governance for the Montgomery County public school system. I am a proud dad of two students at Prices Fork Elementary School, a volunteer with Girl Scouts of America, a religious education teacher to second and third graders at my church, an Eagle Scout, a graduate of Virginia Tech with a PhD in physics. Go Hokies! As a father of two students in MCPS and volunteer teacher to many more, I have a vested interest in making our system the best possible for the children. Teachers, parents, and staff of Montgomery County. I have learned and listened to the parents and the community voters in my district, and I hear clearly their number-one priority is to maintain and advance the level of excellence in our schools from instruction to facilities to counseling. I will accomplish this by advocating for school funding at the local, state, and federal levels of government. This will help us retain our incredible teachers and staff who help earn a top-10 education ranking in the state. They help nurture our children and create a safe and welcoming environment for all students. To be successful at this, it is easy to see there is a small set of critical skills and understanding of how to read federal state and regulations, an eye towards facilities management, a culture of safety learned in industry, success in obtaining federal funds through grants. I will be successful at this. Over the last six years, I have successfully obtained over $7.5 million in federal grants for development of local business technologies, and I already have begun outreach. Thank you.
Thank you. And Derek is in District E. Penny?
Good evening. It sure is good to see a full house of folks here who are so interested in how we educate our children because they will be the ones who will be taking care of us and making sure that our county, along with the rest of this country, moves forward in a way that is representative of everyone. I have been on the board for many years. I have seen many changes, some good, some not so good. But we keep moving forward, and that is the main thing that needs to happen in Montgomery County. Funding is a huge issue to be able to retain and support our teachers and the rest of our staff that make Montgomery County schools wonderful and great. There needs to be integrity on the board. There needs to be folks who are willing to stand up and speak the truth. And if speaking the truth means speaking the truth to power, then that needs to be said and done because integrity is what this is about. We also need to make sure that we are not going backwards. When I started school, schools were segregated. My first two years were segregated. And coming into integrated schools, there was a big adjustment for a lot of people in this county. And, but we made it through it. Are there still disparities? Yes, they are. But we have come a long way from where it was when I had to literally fight to make sure I got my fair share as far as education and being able to be where I needed to be. We cannot go backwards. And some of the things that are being proposed for public education will take us backward. Our history is very important, and we all need to know what our history is and what it was. If not, there will be segments...
And Penny, Penny is in District B. Ed?
Thank you so much. Wow, it's so great to see so many familiar faces in tonight's audience. I want to thank as well the League of Women Voters and the NAACP for hosting tonight's important conversation. And I want to especially thank all of you for coming out as well. I know how important public education is, not only for my family, but also for yours. And I appreciate so much you coming out, and I look forward to your questions. I am the proud father of two amazing MCPS students, one who attends Blacksburg Middle School and may be in the audience, and another one at Blacksburg High School. My wife and I are both educators. We both are professors of history, associate professors of history at Virginia Tech. I was going to say, "Go Hokies" as well, but someone stole my thunder. No. I am an unabashed booster of public education. I would not be where I am today were it not for the investment of public school teachers in my life as a youth. I'm running for school board to defend public education at a time in which it has come under political assault in this country. This isn't the first time that public educators have found themselves on the front lines. As a historian of World War II and its legacy, I come at this moment with a particular perspective. Fear-mongering and book bans have a dark history. They are not signs of a healthy society, I assure you. I am here to fight as well as to serve. As a historian of World War II, I have great admiration for the service of men and women who served in that war, not only in combat roles, but also on... draft boards.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Ed, again, is in District G. Mark?
Good evening, everyone. It's absolutely wonderful to be here tonight. It's great to see all the support that Montgomery County Public Schools actually has because it's a great school division. I'm excited about the possibility of representing voters in District B. As you know, it's mostly Christiansburg, but it's actually part of Blacksburg and part of Eastmont as well. But most importantly, I have a passion for our kids and their education. I have five kids at home, and like, I think I have one here tonight, and it's for extra credit, not because of me, in her class. But they depend on MCPS. But we also have 10,000 other students who depend on MCPS. And to educate them, I believe I have a lot to offer. I believe in public education. I'm a public education person. I love public education. I've served in public education for 30 years, tons of experience. I was, I started as an aide. Then I was a teacher for several years. I was assistant principal, high school principal, assistant director of HR. I was director of instruction, assistant superintendent, and a superintendent. I probably have one of my favorite jobs right now. I currently work at a private day school for special-needs students, and they're very near and dear to me. I have a comprehensive understanding of schools and learning, and I want to continue to serve the students of this county. And I'm very certain that I'd be an asset as a member of the school board. Thank you.
And Mark is running in District B. All right, so we'll begin with the questions, and we ask that you please hold applause until each person has had an opportunity to answer the question. First question is, what is the biggest challenge that MCPS faces? And how would you address that challenge? Let's start with District E. Derek?
Yes. The biggest challenge MCPS faces is attracting and retaining teachers and staff. Towards maintaining and advancing the level of excellence in our school system here, our teachers in Montgomery County are underpaid by $6,000 compared to their peers around the state and $9,000 compared to national peers. Additionally, our custodians are starting at $13.8 cents per hour for day shifts, $14.40 cents per hour for night shifts. If you stop at the Hardee's on the way out of here, they're starting at $15. The state legislature generated a budget for this year with additional $600 million of funding for schools announced today. This is a great start, but we still have a long way to go. We were already underfunded $1.6 billion. I greatly appreciate the state legislators addressing this shortfall, and I look for them to continue to address this in the decades to come.
Thank you. Same question, District B. Penny?
So I'm not one to keep repeating things, but budget, funding. The state made a huge mistake last year and did not properly calculate how they were going to fund schools. So there were millions of dollars pulled back from districts all across the state, which put us into a tailspin as to how we're going to move forward. And how we could move forward was to ask our local governing bodies for funds. Those funds are your tax dollars. It is not fair that localities constantly have to pick up what the state does not provide. Their formula for funding schools is not true. They fund part of the positions that are needed to run the school district, and then the locality has to pick that up, which has a huge impact on everyone in the county. We, as citizens, have to take a stand and come together from all the stakeholders to send the message, we want our schools funded. We want to be able to retain the best teachers and the best staff that we can. It's a shame what we are paying our custodians and some of our other staff, bus drivers. What we have to do to keep them, our technology, our tech people who are supposed to be working on our vehicles, they are having to drive buses because we don't have enough bus drivers, which also impacts extracurricular activities. If we don't come together as a community and send a strong message to the state, that's going to keep falling on us, and it's not fair. If they say they're going to fund public education, then they need to fund public education and not partially do it.
Thank you. All right. Also, District B. Mark?
Funding is a challenge, no doubt. But I think our biggest challenge is the most basic thing in education, and that's reading, writing, and math. Since pre-COVID, our reading scores are down from pre-COVID 5%. Our writing scores are down 13%, and our math scores are down 10%. That's a problem, and we need to focus on that. It's the basics of education. I believe in a comprehensive approach to education. And SOLs are not the end-all, be-all. That's for sure. But they are minimum competency tests. And we need to pay attention to that because our kids need to make up for that learning loss. This needs to be a regular discussion at our school board meetings. You know, I challenge you to review school board meetings. When's the last time you talked about reading, student achievement during those meetings, and what they could do to help? We have great teachers in this school division, some of the best I've ever been around. But we need to ask them, what can we do to help you to help our kids be better and learn reading, writing, and math? How can we support you? And that is resources. You know, I've asked, when I put this as one of my priorities, some folks in science, I was a social studies history folks. They asked, "That's not a priority?" Well, as a social studies teacher, if a kid couldn't read and write when they came to me, that was the basics of me being able to teach them. So we really need to get back to the basics and focus on those three things. Thanks.
District G. Ed?
I guess that leaves me. I agree with the other observations that have been made and comments about defunding of public education. I think it's a crisis at this point. But I want to talk about what I think is another challenge that we're facing, and particularly an important challenge for this community. another challenge that we're facing, in particular, the important challenge for this community. There is an organized political attack on public education under the guise of parental rights at this moment, an attack that is unlike any that I know of since the desegregation of schools in the 1950s, 60s, and 70s. And I want to just address very briefly two aspects of this attack. One of the reasons I became more involved in what was happening in my children's education was that there was an introduction of new English curriculum last year that I saw as a way of getting book banning in through the back door. I worked with teachers and community members to oppose any effort to impose book banning within MCPS. Another thing I wanted to address is that I believe in and will protect the rights and freedoms of students to learn in safe, secure, and welcoming schools. It does not matter if you are Middle Eastern, Korean, transgender, white, disabled. MCPS exists to educate and nurture every youth and child in this country, period. I know that there needs to be very difficult conversations around the topic of transgender rights. It, it has mirrors with the civil rights movement and the, the hard conversations that had taken place around desegregation, but it's not exactly the same. So I want to acknowledge that there are legitimate, honest questions of how to make this happen, but we have an obligation under state and federal law and also under a moral obligation to address this issue so it does not tear this community apart. Thank you.
And District F, Laura.
Thank you. I think that Ms. Franklin's answer was probably at the heart of everything because we really can't achieve all the lofty goals that we may talk about tonight without the proper funding. What Mr. Roundtree mentioned as well has been a huge concern of mine about just teacher retention, and this is a national problem. It's not unique to, to here. In fact, we are not in as bad straits as, as some other places in the Commonwealth and in the country. But one problem that keeps coming back into, into my mind, being brought up by constituents and other concerned parents that I've talked to, is just adequate support for students with special needs and especially 504 plans and IEPs. And there is, I think, you know, there's federally mandated that they, they, they need adequate support. It's hard to provide. There's often a communication breakdown at many different levels. So kind of rethinking perhaps how support for that, those students is put together needs to be rethought or reconfigured, how support carries from elementary school through high school and middle school, and how, as situations change, students that may have been coping or getting by, something can happen, and then, you know, other issues crop up, and they have a harder time being successful. So that is, is a major issue that I'd really like to become more educated about and, and deal with as a board member. Thank you.
Thank you. Second question. What are your priorities for MCPS? We'll begin with Ed.
So I have five different priorities. One is to defend the rights of students to learn and grow in safe, nurturing environments. I briefly touched on that a moment ago. Another priority for me is respecting and valuing teachers, aides, and other MCPS employees as skilled professionals. One of the reasons I became alarmed and concerned last year when I was involved with the study sync in English curriculum is that there was a concerted effort to strip teachers of autonomy. I am a fellow educator. I believe in you. It's, you know, we need to address the pay. I think that that is, that's, that's one aspect of this problem that we have in this county, but I think the other is to respect teachers and let them teach. I am very proud to have the endorsement of the Montgomery County Education Association PAC, and I look forward to working with teachers to, to address these serious issues. Another priority for me is pursuing integrity in leadership and administration. I will do my best, if I am elected, to be transparent and honest with you, the public. I have watched school board meetings and heard conversations that did not live up to that standard of transparency, and that's something that I'm committed to. I've heard numerous conversations about holding teachers accountable. I think we should hold administrators accountable as well. So I have particular ideas of how to do that, but I think the era of failing up should be over. And so this is one of my commitments, that I'm going to be honest with you and as transparent as possible in, in, in the work that I do with the school board.
Thank you. Laura, your priorities?
So I tried, I feel like this will echo some of the things that Dr. Gitry said. I tried to keep my priorities to three general areas, and students come first. Like, that just seems like a no-brainer. However, when I, I see some of the things that happen, I read about things that are happening. We're not always putting students first, and we need to. Their facilities need to be safe. They need to feel comfortable in order to be successful to learn. We need to both support them so that they have the basics, but also challenge them so that when they go out beyond after their education here, they have the resiliency to face all of the, the challenges that may come in their lives. Number two, to support teachers in all the ways that we can. It's already been articulated how, how poorly we're paying our teachers in Montgomery County. You know, that, that's at the heart of it. You need to, to earn, earn a living, to, to do your job well. They also need other support. They need our trust. They need to know that we have, we have their back because they give so, so much to us and to our community. And finally, to respect parents and better build that interplay because the other two things don't matter if parents aren't involved, that there isn't that trust and give and take relationship. So we need the three to work together to be successful.
All right. Derek.
Yes. So my top priorities are to create a safe and welcoming environment for all of our students. This means all students, including our at-risk students and our economically disadvantaged students. There are those that would marginalize and bully specific groups of people. I'm not one of those. My second priority is to provide representation for all students, parents, teachers, and staff to the superintendent and central office. I believe that our public education system performs best when there is a broad input from all of the stakeholders in the community. And my third priority is to provide, is to advocate for school funding, as I've already stated, at the local, state, and federal levels. This includes providing a voice from our district to our local, state, and federal representatives, as well as making the public aware of the elected officials that have not supported the funding of our schools, or have supported to de-allocate or of public funds from our public schools for private or alternative schooling. Successful implementation of these three priorities, I hope, will accomplish the goal of maintaining and advancing the level of excellence in our schools from instruction to facilities to counseling. Our children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, and neighborhood kids deserve the best possible education we can provide for them.
Thank you. All right, District B, Mark.
So I've given you my first priority in terms of reading, writing, and math. That is the most basic. Next is safe schools, and not just safe from outside intruders. We need to continue to monitor and look at how we can make our buildings safer from outside intruders. But also, safety is on the inside as well. I've had tons of complaints about discipline in our schools, and what's happening is this. Our administrators have become afraid to discipline students. You can't be afraid to discipline students because they need a consequence if they misbehave in school. And what's happening is, is basically they're afraid to suspend a student, and there are a lot of reasons for that that have been publicized, but we have to work with the kids who want to be there and the teachers that want to teach. Kids need to be able to learn, and teachers need to be able to teach, and disruptive kids can sometimes keep from that. Communication's important. I promise to communicate with everyone, always have and always will. I'll stand up for the rights of parents. I believe that parents do have rights to, they do not lose the right to be a parent when their kid enters the school building, plain and simple. Supporting our educators, whether it be working for increase in pay, I know that that's important. I agree. To benefits, providing them with resources, I want to support all educators. That means our bus drivers, our aides, our cafeteria workers, our teachers. And I don't bash administrators, I support them. Assistant principals, principals are important, folks, to run our schools. Our central office people are important to run our schools. When you start bashing one group, it takes away from the teamwork of all. We need to come together because that's what's best for all of our kids.
And also, District B, Penny.
So, again, I'm going to say safety is one of the top priorities, and it is not just the buildings. It is what goes on inside those buildings. Discipline has become an issue, and part of that is because programs that we have in place to help support our children are not being used in the way they should be used. Parents play a role in how their children behave in school, and they need to take responsibility for that. So there needs to be support coming from central office, coming from administrators to say to parents, sorry, but this is what happened, and this is what went on, and these are the consequences. But we also have many students who don't have that support, don't have that guidance, and it is up to, unfortunately, the school system where they're at for many, many hours during the day to help guide them in those right directions and not always throw them out the buildings. This district has not had a good history in the last few years of supporting students. Even the state has looked at us and seen the disproportionality between black students being expelled and white students. This has to change. It's been going on way too long. All of our other students who identify as something other than the majority, they need to be supported, and they need to be understood, and their needs need to be met also. Parents play a great role in that also. But parents, for the biggest part, are not educators. When COVID hit and our children went home, teachers were glorified for all the work that they did with students, but then when parents wanted them to go back, teachers were demonized. We have to work together to make sure that we're all on the same page in understanding what's best for our students. That's about safety also, and mental health. I probably don't have time.
All right. Thank you for those responses. So now I have some questions that have come from you, the audience, so let's see what the people want to know. This question is about books. How should the school board deal with parents who insist on banning books? Who should make decisions about books in the school libraries? Ed.
Well, right now, the school board does have a policy. You know, parents, I agree with the comments that have been made about parents being integral to the education of their youth. There are lots of ways for parents to be involved. Parents are involved, and they have been for a long time. If a parent is concerned about what books their child might encounter, I mean, there are a couple of ways of handling it. I love to go to the bookstore with my children and talk to them about books. I'm involved in their lives and the books that they read, but in terms of school, yes, I understand that I'm not there. But if you have concerns, there's a policy in place for parents to be, be engaged in a process if they have those concerns. I trust librarians. I trust teachers. Their goal in the, in the books that they bring into their libraries and their classrooms is not to scandalize their children. That is not their intention. So while I, I understand that there are concerns, there are legitimate concerns about the kinds of books that might be available, I support that, the policy that we have to allow parents to be involved in that decision-making process cooperatively with the schools, with the Yeah.
Laura.
About books?
Yes.
Can you read the question again, Dr. Falcone?
Absolutely. How should the school board deal with parents who insist on banning books? Who should make decisions about the books in school libraries?
Librarians are professionals who go through many years of training in order to build a collection that's age-appropriate for children from pre-K through, through high school, and that's the system that we have here in Montgomery County. So I very much trust librarians, and I trust teachers to bring kids to the books that will improve their literacy and engage them and help them to think critically and, and be successful in their, in their lives, because that's what books do. As far as challenged books, if a parent has a particular concern about a particular book and their child, that's, that's a one-person issue that that parent can deal, deal with the, with the school about that issue, but they absolutely should not be restricting access to every other, other child and educator in the school.
All right. Penny.
Okay, books. So again, as you heard, there is policy that says how books are bought into the school system, and parents have the opportunity to opt their children out of seeing books that they don't want them to see, hearing books they don't want to hear. Now, should we make sure that there is better access so that parents understand this is an option you have? Sure. But banning books, again, because one or two people don't believe this is what they want for their student, there are ways to address that without tearing books out of the schools. Again, this goes to my statement of, are we going backwards? Are we going backwards? How do we prepare our students for the world? This is a global society now, not just Montgomery County here tucked in to these beautiful mountains. Our students go everywhere in this world, and they need to be prepared to understand and deal with everything that they're going to come into contact with. And that, for the biggest part, happens through books.
All right. Mark.
So I have to be careful how I answer this question because my wife's a librarian sitting in the front row, and she's been shaking her head to yes to all of your answers, and she agrees with you. And so, so yeah, I, you know, I agree with most of what's said here. We do have policy. We have, you know, there's code now in Virginia where it allows parents to be aware of the books that are in libraries. And I, I think, I think we're right that we need to make sure that parents are aware of what books are in the libraries and be very intentional about that. You know, there's been discussions about gray level appropriateness, you know? There is, you know, I think some level of that, but you know, I think it's still up to the parents. I believe in complete parent rights. When I say parent rights, I mean parent rights. No matter where you are, who you are, what side you're on, I think it's up to the parents, what their kids should and should not read. And we've dealt with this before. We've had, you know, in Montgomery County, parents have opted out of assignments, and alternative assignments were given, and I think that's, it's worked well. And so I'm, I'm not a book banner by no means, you know, but you know, we, we do need to make sure parents know what their kids have access to. I think that's really, really important.
Derek.
Yes, so our librarian-
Yes, so our librarians and our English teachers are professionals. They've had many years of educational experience. And they deserve some respect with their selections of material. That being said, our, our community has a diverse and varying background with varying morals as well. And if a parent has a problem with a specific assignment, reading material, for some moral reason or some other objection, they can speak to that teacher and alternative reading assignments or alternative assignments can be administered for that student. Additionally, the Virginia Department of Education approves books for use in school systems. If a teacher is going outside of those approved lists, they do have to ask for permission from the, the parents. If it's on that list, they're able to teach those books. But is there some concern that teachers should be reporting books to parents beforehand? Possibly. So in, in summary, I support a diverse number of books in our school systems. And as I said many times, in my own opinion, in my house, the only bad book is a book a kid won't read.
Thank you. Next question. LGBTQ plus topics have drawn much attention and created some controversy and disagreement. How will you facilitate a beneficial outcome around these topics? District B, Mark.
First, let me say that I, I support all students and the choices families make for their students as long as it doesn't infringe upon the rights of other students and staff. Let me take you back to the fall of 2021. It was advised by the VC, VSBA, Virginia School Board Association, and this, um, MCPS School Board Attorney not to adopt Governor Northam's transgender model policy. Against the advice, the school board did this anyway when the vast majority of school divisions in the state listened to the advice of the attorneys and did not. They obviously, here in Montgomery County, wanted to make a statement. They did add to the policy that a parent or guardian had to approve any transgender accommodations. However, that was screwed up this part as well because it was later interpreted as one parent and not all parents just thus interjecting themselves into family matters. Due to this, I am in support of Governor Youngkin's policy, which I believe is very reasonable. The current policy allows, the current MCPS policy allows for biological males to change in the same locker room as females. This is absolutely ridiculous. It allows biological males to compete in sports against females, which is unfair. It requires teachers and staff to refer to students based on their preferred pronouns, which I believe violates our teachers, many of our teachers' religious beliefs. This insane court, um, let me say, I, I believe that our students should have a right to privacy. I believe our female athletes should not have to compete against biological males. I think that's simply what's fair. And I'll be in support of adopting Governor Youngkin's policy if elected.
Penny.
I believe the policy that we have in place is the policy that should be in place. Parent, guardian is just what it should be. In many situations, in many homes, there are not two parents who can step up and say, "This is what we want or this is what we don't want." It's one parent. I believe that protects the right of parents. I believe it very much protects the right of our students. Again, I came to school when schools were just being integrated. And the things that our LGBTQ students are going through are some of the exact same things that we went through as African-American students coming into the system as integrated. And it was not fun. It didn't make you feel good. And there are still scars from things that were said and done and how we were treated from those days. Why would we want to do that to another group of students? I will not support Governor Youngkin's recommended whatever because it does nothing but help to separate and help to harm students and put them into more difficult situations than they are in now. And that is to be who they are and be proud of it and be accepted for who they are.
All right. District E, Derek.
Yes. So Governor Youngkin's model policies are a minefield of legal challenges awaiting school districts. The policies counteract court rulings and federal and state laws. And if implemented as they are written, will result in lawsuits to our school system. The target of Governor Youngkin's model policies is to have a school district go against federal, state laws and court rulings. And have a s- school district that does not have the funds to challenge the ACLU or other like-minded civil unions in court. And run up a legal fee to the Supreme Court and maybe end up with a win for Youngkin. All in the meantime, bankrupting a school district. This is what Governor Youngkin's policies will do if a school goes to implement them. Whether Youngkin wins or loses at the Supreme Court, the school will be bankrupt. Thank you.
All right. Laura. District F.
I'm, I'm kind of old. I graduated in hi- from high school in 1994. And, yeah, I know. There were, there were zero queer kids who were out in my high school. And I think about that a lot because that's sad. Because they were going to school, but they didn't feel comfortable to be out. And you can't fully learn and engage if you are hiding yourself. And we should not be creating an atmosphere in Montgomery County public schools that is making it uncomfortable for any student to be themselves and keeping them from, from learning. The policies that MCPS have towards supporting transgender youth as established by, um, speakers before me, they, they comply with the law. We do not need to be draining our already fragile funds on, on political wins. Um, I think it's really important that all kids have a safe and supportive learning environment. And I would do my best to educate myself to be an ally, um, for the students who need it. Thank you.
Ed. District G.
Okay, I'm going to make this really simple to start off with. Equality is baked into our foundational documents in our government. LGBTQ plus students, transgender students have a ri- have rights. Um, we are obligated to provide them equal access. So we have a choice to make. Either we provide them equal access or we don't. What is it going to be? Are we going to work toward a more perfect union or not? I don't see a lot of options here. So there are lots of questions of how you make that happen. And again, I think that there are legitimate questions of how to make that happen. But that's different. That's a, that's a different order than, uh, what we're seeing with the fear mongering coming out from the administration. I'm just going to briefly address another aspect of that. I don't know if you saw, the Attorney General came up with an opinion. In that opinion, he quoted a 2003 opinion from his predecessor. In that 2003 opinion, the predecessor supported local governance. But the Attorney General rewrote that quote so it would support parental rights. I believe in local governance. Our current governor is encouraging parents to sue school divisions. So that is what I think about what Youngkin is trying to do right now. And I utterly reject it. We have a policy in place. I think it should actually provide stronger protections for students. Um, I think it's, I, I support it. I don't oppose it, but I think there's still more work to do, even with the policy that we have now. Um, so I think Youngkin takes us in the wrong direction. I am committed to a more perfect union. I'm going to end on that.
All right. Thank you all. Next question. Should taxpayer dollars be transferred to private schools and homeschools when parents object to the values and curriculum of the public schools? Laura.
No. I, I'm here because I support public schools. I believe in public schools. I attended public schools. My children attended public schools. My husband attended public schools. His father was a public school teacher and his grandmother as well. I believe in public schools and public education and that as a community, we have a better community when we have a strong public school system. If individual parents feel the need to homeschool, and I've talked to a lot of parents who have ended up homeschooling, because their kids weren't getting supported in the way that they needed. And that's their option, but they don't get a voucher for it. They don't get a, a bonus. We need to maintain the integrity of our, of our public schools.
Okay. District D, Derek.
Yeah, so that'd be a no. Um, pu- public dollars belong in public schools. I'm a, I'm a extreme proponent of public schools. I went to public schools from kindergarten all the way through my PhD in Louisiana, Connecticut. Uh, Louisiana for LSU for undergrad, Virginia Tech for graduate school. Public dollars should go to public schools. And the, the thing that I have with public schools and the value that they add is they provide a exposure to a very diverse community. The school that I went to in high school, for example, was Lafayette High School in Lafayette, Louisiana. It was approximately 40% black, 7% Vietnamese, and 53% Caucasian. The, the split was about 50/50 inner-city kids and suburb kids, low pro- low, low wealth and high wealth. I was exposed to, to what it means to be poor, even though my family was not. I had friends that were poor. I had friends that they, they slept in places that wasn't necessarily where you would want your child sleeping. And without those experiences, I wouldn't have empathy for the people that I see today that don't have what I have. And that are struggling, that are struggling for rights, for their basic human rights, that are struggling to get an education. As we take money from education in this manner of vouchers, we strip the money from the schools, depleting the resources that we so valuably need for our public education for everyone. Thank you.
Penny.
Big no. I'm just going to keep referring back to history. Because this is the same thing that happened during integration. Parents who did not want their children in classroom with black students took them out, started their own schools, shut school districts down, which became a huge burden on the black parents to be able to find ways to educate their children, which again, still has caused disparities in this country. Public education, as has been said, is public education. Public dollars should be supporting public educations, education, but as we know, it still doesn't. But we want everything that we're getting. If you want to take your child, for whatever your beliefs or whatever your child's needs are, out of public schools, please, you're welcome to do that. There are ways to do that. And that's on you. That's on you.
All right. Mark.
It really doesn't matter what I believe about vouchers because it's not a school board issue. It's a, it's a state issue. Um, you know, even our local body has tried to affirm it. What I do believe is that parents should be able to school their kids the way they want to school their kids, whether it be homeschool, private school, uh, religious, religious reasons. Um, they ought to be able to, to school their kids the way they see fit. One thing that our school board has done this past year is we had a program that allowed homeschoolers to access, um, Virtual Virginia. It did not cost the school division one penny to do it. The teachers are from outside of the school division. It actually brought money into the school division. And that was stopped, um, last fall against, and a lot of homeschool parents came and spoke up for that. I think it needs to be re-implemented. I think they ought to have access to, to the Virtual Virginia. It didn't cost anything. I think that's important. In terms of, you know, I believe that kids ought to be able to take their, kids and homeschool them or whatever for religious reasons. My opponent does not believe that. Just the other night, she voted against seven students, seven students who applied for religious exemption, and they were not, she voted no. Why? I believe in freedom of religion. I believe if a parent wants to educate them that way, that's fine. Ultimately, I am a public school guy. I've always been in public schools. I was educated in them. I worked in them for 30 years. I love public schools. I believe we need to be competitive. We had kids who dropped out. We've, we've gone down in our enrollment and up in homeschool. We need to be asking the question, why? Why are these parents pulling their kids from our schools?
District G, Ed.
I'm going to start by saying that I'm not opposed to homeschooling. Uh, for me, this is not about homeschooling. The privatization of, of education took out, took off after Brown versus Board of Education. There's a direct correlation between the effort to integrate schools and privatization. There's a particular history, as was just discussed, in the state of Virginia. And it wasn't just parents who took their children out of school. The state privatized education and shut public schools. Um, I think that history is abhorrent. And so I'm, I'm not opposed to homeschooling, but I believe public education exists to educate every child and youth in Montgomery County. If someone opts out of that system, they're fully within their right to do it. But I support public education.
Thank you. All right. Next question. And bear with me, this one's pretty lengthy on a very important topic, I think. Mental and behavioral health are necessary to help students learn, but also to create a safe school environment. Yet, across the state, mental and behavioral health are underfunded with too few resources, including counselors. What should the schools do to achieve these three goals? Number one, a respectful climate with support for students of different abilities and characteristics. Number two, a climate that does not tolerate bullies. And number three, a safe environment without risk of assault by intruders. And I see they are writing down those three goals, so I'll give just a second for them to, to finish.
Did you repeat the third one?
Absolutely. The third one, a safe environment without risk of assault by intruders. The third one, a safe environment without risk of assault by intruders. All right, let's start with Laura, District F.
So I absolutely believe that there needs to be more support for, for mental health and, and behavioral health in schools. Those of you kind of keeping up with some of our, our current situation, there were some extra, extra money from the federal government that Montgomery County gets for one year to have a, a little extra support in dealing with some mental health issues. But like, one year goes, goes really fast, and that, that money will be spent really quickly, and what will happen afterwards, we don't really know. Obviously, having more counselors is really, is absolutely critical. Teachers have to play so many different roles that they're often not necessarily trained to do, so providing some, some access and also some relief to some of the things that, that teachers hear and see is really critical. As far as a respectful climate, managing bullying, and a, and a safe environment, I mean, it's a lot. Teachers and school principals, they set, they set a tone. They are so, so critical in establishing a tone of like, of behavior and establishing norms and what is going to be acceptable and not acceptable within a building. And that's absolutely critical and, and needs to be supported. As far as bullying goes, I think some, some others have already addressed this, just, I think, some really clear boundaries, engagement with parents when, when there are problems, and, and really clear consequences as well. And as far as a safe environment, sadly, okay.
All right. District B, Mark?
There's no doubt that we have more students these days with mental health issues for, for a number of reasons. And I know our schools do the best they possibly can to address them on a daily basis. We don't have, we have a shortage of counselors, and counselors have a shortage of time, too, as you know. There's actually a shortage of counselors in general, even want to hire more counselors. Not, not many folks are going into counseling, so I think that's, that's something that we need to look at. We, I think we also need to look at outside agencies that can help us and partner with schools. I think that's something that we could do. There are agencies out there that we could work with and, and do a better job in working with to help with these, with, with our, with our so many students who are having these, these issues. You know, the climate and bullies, you know, we need to, we need to make sure we're paying attention. We need to make sure that we're addressing it. We need to teach the kids behaviors, but we also need to discipline kids, too, when they are not acting appropriately and they're bullying their, their peers. A safe environment, you know, I think you asked about outside, we need to continue to monitor our buildings and look at our buildings and what they look like for outside intruders. Every time there's a renovation done, there are improvements that are made, but they're not being made fast enough, for instance. And, you know, we have, in Montgomery County, made some improvements over the years, but we can continue to look at more improvements. And, and we have one of the best partnerships with law enforcement ever that I've ever seen in any school division, between the county and the two towns and, and Virginia Tech Police Department, and they do an excellent job in evaluating the safety of, of our schools. And I think we need to continue to look to them to help us and see what we can do to continue to make it even more safe.
Penny?
I'll start with the outside safety. So we do have an excellent partnership with our law enforcement folks in this community. They meet regularly with administration to make suggestions, to figure out how they can do things better, put new systems into the school system that will better alert if there is a situation, and that alone is gold, because not everyone has that kind of relationship. Bullying, bullying is something that's been going on for a long, long time, and unfortunately, it wasn't addressed way back then, the way it's addressed now. It's because social media helps to bring it to the forefront. One of the ways I think that we can help control some of that is that we control those devices that come into our school buildings, because it's all over the place before an administrator even thinks that there's a situation. The situations are being created. It needs to be addressed. Taking a phone away from someone, I think you may as well cut their head off, because that's the way it feels today if you say, you gotta turn your phone off. You can't use your phone while you're in this location, even in my workplace. But it causes true problems in our schools to have those devices on 24/7. A respectful climate, a respectful climate is one where everybody understands, everybody should be treated the same way. And that's when we have policies in place and we make sure that everyone in the building, including the children, understand we have to respect each other. And again, there are consequences if that doesn't happen. But when it goes, comes to the mental health piece, many, as you know, okay.
District G, Ed?
Okay, so, really complex, and I've got a short amount of time here. I agree with a number of the comments that have made, I mean, some of this just comes down to money. I'm, I was happy to hear about the, the new state budget for 118 million additional dollars going to, to, to local school districts, you know, support for positions, teacher raises, but there was no additional money for mental health. And, and certainly, you, you just need the money to, to hire, whether you're working with outside agencies or hiring within the school division. So, but one of the things that I do think that we can do without the money is have greater transparency. One of the things that was concerning while watching board meetings is having some parents coming up and, and students talking about bullying, and there was a gap between some of the public rhetoric and what was coming out about what's happening in our school. And I think one of the ways of starting to address this issue is to have greater transparency and honesty between the school board administration and the wider public on this issue of bullying and discipline in the schools. I think that there's a, a very fine line with school safety. On the one hand, we want our children to feel safe, but one of the things that I encountered with my own children is that they weren't being allowed to go outside because there was fear of what might happen to them. And they, they didn't like that. That did not help their mental health. And so, these are really complex issues, I understand that. I don't have an easy solution, but I do think that we need to be more honest. The, the school division and school board need to be more honest with the public about these struggles.
Okay. And finally, District E, Derek?
Yes. Oh, mental health. So luckily, we do have $1 million from ESAR funding this coming year in order to help us with mental health, providing additional mental health care. The federal government is also working to provide additional mental health dollars for school systems around the country, and I very much appreciate that from our federal government. Creating a respectful climate for students of varying abilities. We need to educate our teacher, our students on different levels of advancement for students, different disabilities that students may have, dyslexia, ADHD, how those things differ with the learning environment, how we can better interact with those children, how the kids can better, how other kids can better interact with those children. Bullying, one thing with bullying, which I give kudos to, to the designers of the new Christiansburg High School, most bullying occurs out of the sight of teachers. The easiest place to be out of the sight of teachers is in an open concept bathroom or locker room. We need to get funding. As Youngkin said, we don't have a transgender problem, we have a bathroom problem. There's not enough bathrooms. One thing I agree with the man on. Let's get some additional bathrooms, have single stalls for people to change in with respect. You don't have to go in and change in front of somebody else if you don't want to expose your body to them. And some restrooms that you can go in and take care of what you need to take care of with your respiratory system. A safe environment with respect to intruders. I was a Virginia Tech student on April 16th, 2007. Since that day, our law enforcement has been actively going around helping areas with the, this, with this problem, and I'm out of time, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have come to the final question for this evening, and it is about collaboration and politics. What steps will you take to improve collaboration among the school board members and with the Board of Supervisors and town councils? As part of a nonpartisan board, how will you maintain political independence and focus on what is best for all our country's students? What's the best way to address differences of opinion among the board members? Ed? District G?
Okay. One of the things that I've, I've seen and encountered and have heard that I, I would like to address if I'm on the school board, and one of, one of the ways that I'd like to encourage collaboration is I've tried to emphasize in my answer that this public school system is for everyone. We've got to work for everyone. Every child and youth needs to be served by MCPS. I've, I've heard a lot said in school board meetings about Blacksburg versus the rest of the county or vice versa, and I want to work to overcome that, that recurring theme in our conversations. We need to work together. I mean, one of my concerns is that there are people in Blacksburg who have gotten to the point, they're like, Blacksburg should just be its own city and break off from the rest of the county because of this issue, and, and that will not be good for anyone. I do not see that as the solution. We not, we must work together as a county. And I will push back on this school board if I hear school board members use this language of us against them. I live in Blacksburg, but I am, I am here to work on behalf of every student in this county. And so, when it comes to, with, with collaboration, I will work with other school members from the other parts of the county to ensure that their schools are the best in the county as well, that they have good school buildings, that they don't feel like Blacksburg is getting all the benefits and that they don't. Some of our schools that need the most attention are in Blacksburg, and so I, I want to work on overcoming that division.
All right, great. District B, Mark?
Over my 30 years, I had the opportunity to work in four school divisions. I worked directly with three school boards. Prior to coming here, my two previous school boards, they had disagreements, but they are professional and courteous to each other. They focused on school board policy every single meeting, which is a primary job of the school board. When accepting the job at Montgomery County as superintendent in 2015, I had several superintendents call me and ask, what are you doing? Why would you want to go work for that board? Our MCPS school board has a reputation around the state, and it hasn't been good, folks. Upon arriving, frankly, I was shocked at how our school board interacted with one another, and that, that is why we have this question, I'm sure. Publicly, we've had board members act less than professional, they've called themselves dysfunctional, they become outright nasty to each other on several occasions in public. We've seen board members get upset at parents and storm out of board meetings. Recently, I saw a school board member call our, our current superintendent a liar publicly. This is in public. Behind the scenes, I've seen even worse. I've seen bullying occur from member to member. How can our board take a matter such as school bullying seriously if the board can't control itself from doing the same thing? We must set an example for our students and act in a cordial manner. People are actually told me they watch school boards for the dramas, like it's some sitcom. That's a problem, folks. This type of behavior, it affects the morale of our staff and the community. They want to see a school board that seems to know what they're doing and trying to understand what it's like to be in a school. As a seven-member school board, we will not always agree with one another, but we can disagree and be respectful to one another. We need a change. We need a school board that works together in a professional manner. If elected, I will certainly do my part to make this happen. Let's give this county a school board that we can be proud of, folks.
All right. Penny?
So, I've been on this board for a long time, and until the recent history, this board disagreed all the time, but when we left here, we were all still speaking to each other, we had relationships, and we understood it was okay to disagree, but we needed to put children first. And then there was a change in the administration. And if you will watch board meetings now, they are much more civil. The relationship with the Board of Supervisors, which was not good, is becoming much more functional. In our joint meeting the other night, we were, it was a wonderful meeting. We agreed we needed to communicate more and to meet more and talk about the business of the county, which the biggest part of that is the school system. I've pushed for joint meetings for us to come up with plans for capital projects and to work on our budget, and that was agreed to the other night. It was wonderful. So now, the school system is working, the school board, should I say, is working much better together, and why is that? And again, the relationship with the Board of Supervisors is becoming much better. Why is that? It was good when I first came here, and then it went downhill, and now it's getting better. I'll let you make the determination with that.
All right. District E, Derek?
Okay. So I plan to work with other board, school board members in a considerate and civil manner while debating the issues before the school board. There are seven individuals on the school board. All seven individuals bring their own unique life experiences to the board and will thus have differing opinions at times. But we should strive to work together in a civil arena towards the betterment of our school system, for it's all about the children. We need to make the, the schools the best possible that we can for the kids. Talking about across the county, my Girl Scout troop, Troop 224, is actually out of Shawsville. My children originally started at Falling Branch Elementary, and we still go to Shawsville every other week in order to participate in Girl Scouts. This gives us a diverse opinion, or diverse exposure to the county, the students of the county, from Shawsville, Eastmont, all the way over to Blacksburg. All of the kids deserve a quality education, no matter which region of our county they come from. We need to work with the Board of Supervisors. Whatever board y'all choose to vote for, I will work with. We need to increase funding for our schools. During the meeting where funding was discussed, it was a one-sided conversation, trying to get some kind of debate going on, trying to get those school, those superintendent, or sorry, those board supervisor members to express some opinion other than a hard line on 70 cents on $100, and they wouldn't do anything. They wouldn't discuss why, and they wanted to take it all from the schools. I'll work with those school board, with those superintendent members, or board supervisor members, but I'm also informing the public of what they did.
All right. And District F, Laura?
I'm, I'm here because I, I believe in public schools and I think it is, is my obligation and our obligation as a community to provide the best schools that we can for the kids in our community, and that is always my number one reason for sitting And that is always my number one reason for sitting here tonight, for, for serving, should I have the opportunity, and for working with others. So it's, it's the kids first, and hopefully that will be a convincing argument as we do start to establish relationships with some of the other governing bodies in the area. As, as voters, I hope that you all will, will listen to the, the other candidates besides just school board because we, we aren't a funding body and a lot of things are out of our control. So if schools are important to you, please make sure that your, that your vote reflects that as well. I'm, I'm good at listening, but I'm also kind of, kind of tired of people not doing the right thing, like exhausted. And that's part of the reason why I'm here too. So when other elected officials are actively choosing to not support their schools, they can also, you know, make sure that they're saying it repeatedly to my face. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, all right, we are gonna have closing statements now. Each candidate will have just two minutes to make their final pitch tonight, and we'll begin with Mark.
Thank you. Hitting my priorities again, reading, writing, math. We can't talk enough about that. It's the basis of what we do. It's why our kids go to school. It's why our, our parents send our kids to school. We need to get better. We need, we need to bring standards up to prior COVID. We kept kids out of school too long during COVID. My opponent voted every time to keep kids at home and not allow them to come back to school during COVID. Thank goodness, we had some bipartisanship on that board and they took politics out and we had a four to three vote. Thank goodness to get kids back in school in March of that year. I still think it was too late, but we need to work on that. We need to see what we can do to catch our kids back up. Safe schools inside and out. I talked about that and discipline in our schools needs to be firm and it needs to be, teachers and principals need to be allowed to discipline kids. Communication's key. I will communicate with all stakeholders at any time, all the time. I'll stand up for the rights of parents. Parents do not lose the right to be a parent when their kid enters schools. That is simple. That is in case law. Fourteenth Amendment says it. Supporting our educators. I've supported our educators for many, many years, whether as a school principal or as a superintendent, and I'll continue to do that. I've advocated for raises every year, and I'll continue to do that. I'll make sure, I'll do my best to, to compensate our folks fairly. Our issue, some folks have given our board supervisor a hard time. It's not the board supervisors, folks, it's the state. Some folks have talked about the state funding. State funding is an issue. The, it is an antiquated composite index in how our schools are funded. And we need to lobby at the state, all of us, to make sure that that changes at some point. But in the end, folks, I, I would appreciate the votes of District B. I promise I will represent that community. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all again for, for this evening and the conversation. This is not easy. But I hope that I've earned your confidence in your vote. We all want what's best for our children. We want them to be safe. We want them to thrive. We want them to have bright futures. If I'm elected to be on the school board, I want to work together. I want to bring people together. Hard conversations are necessary. I'm committed to those conversations. I'm committed to being honest with you, as honest as I can, to be transparent. I am not a status quo kind of guy, if you can pick that up here. But I also am committed to working with other school board members to move this division forward so it can be the best it can possibly be. That's what I want to work toward. I want to work toward a, a school division that doesn't have divisions over where you live, but is committed to a common, bright future for everyone. Thank you.
Penny?
Again, thank you for the opportunity. Citizens in District B, I've represented you for many years, and you've always known where I stand. I don't waffle back and forth. I keep our children first. Now, when you hear comments about masking and too long, Montgomery County was the only district in this area that did not close back down after the masks came off. We stayed in because we did what we needed to do to keep the students and our teachers and the rest of the staff and their families safe, and we didn't have to shut back down. As far as religious exemptions, homeschool students have to be accountable for how they're teaching their children. With religious exemptions, I believe their parents need to do whatever they feel they need to do according to their religion, but there's no accountability. We don't know what is happening with those students, and someone needs to make sure that they are being educated so that they can read and write and do math. I need to stay as your representative because there needs to be historic history. There needs to be someone who understands what has happened in the past, what, where we shouldn't go and where we should go. This school division needs to have representation from everybody in the county. It, this board needs to reflect who is in this county, and I do that. But I also understand I represent every student in this county. But District B, it's home. I've been here all my life, and it will, as far as I know right now, it's gonna be, I'm gonna be here for the rest of my life because I'm committed to this community and I'm committed to Christiansburg. There's always gonna be a Christiansburg-Blacksburg thing, I'm sorry. But, but.
Derek?
Yeah, so we need to address the lapses in education, social adjustments of our children due to the COVID shutdowns. I'd like to thank the board that took care of the school system during COVID. It was a hard job, and nobody knew the right answers. They made decisions. It's their job. Did they make the right decisions? We don't know. We can't go back. We can't change the decisions. We can't run ten experiments. I'm a physicist, sorry. That's how I talk. So thank y'all for that. Parents' rights to be involved in school, parents definitely have rights to be involved in school. And I encourage parents to be involved in school. Go to lunch with your kid. Volunteer to talk about your profession. Volunteer to read in your element, in your child, elementary school kid's school. Hang up artwork in the hallways so that they walk by them and see them and are promoting their self-esteem. Let's focus on the education of our children. They're why we're here. They're the reason for public schools. And I appreciate your consideration and vote this fall. Thank you.
Laura?
Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters, the NAACP, and Dr. Faulkner. Putting on an event of this scale, I know, takes so much of your time and effort. So thank you again for hosting all of us this evening. I am honored to have had the opportunity to listen to concerns, to do my best to provide honest and thoughtful answers to the many questions presented here tonight. And like many others have said, this is not an easy job. I'm reminded of some canvassing that I did this past spring when I spoke to a constituent, and she was just so convinced of the brokenness of public schools that she wouldn't even engage with me to talk about how to support them. I'm not blind to the many problems that our schools face, and most of our problems are not unique to us. Their learning loss and keeping schools safe, every single school in this country are essentially dealing with the same thing. Learning challenges, curriculum concerns, discipline, funding, teacher shortage, facility, safety, equity, unfortunately, I could go on. When I decided to run, it's because despite my concerns, I felt that my choice must reflect my values, and public education is important and worth protecting and fighting for. It's not about ego and ideology. This is about our kids and the chances that they get, which are directly connected to the opportunities that we provide for them. My hope is that along with addressing some of these persistent problems, we can also work together to be innovative and support positive change. And our kids are worth it, all of our kids. Please vote.
Thank you so much to all of the candidates who are stepping up to try to serve the public. And I turn it back over to Gune.
Thank you so much. This is the easy part. I got the easy, and I am the one with the end of the evening and finishing this forum, I think. Thank you all running. You know, I've been on that seat, served eight years. I know what it means, and it's not easy. It's not thankful most part, but I appreciate everybody's stepping foot and putting their head in and making this place. I always believed that MCPS is the still better school division in the Commonwealth, and I still believe in that, and I know we can improve it. I know you all will make it better, so I trust that. So thanks for being here. Thank you, Dr. Faulkner, for leading this group and discussions tonight. And thank you, our sorthers, Carolyn, David, Beth, and Karen, all of you. And thank you all for filling up this room. We don't get this room filled very often, so it's really nice to see, involve citizens, involve parents, and I hope you will continue to do so after whatever is outcome and whoever is sitting there because issues are not gonna go away, and I think they're gonna need your support moving forwards. The other thing is, we have still, I think, five for forums, five more forums every Thursday night, 7 o'clock. I would like to see you. Next one is here, next one is here for our Board of Supervisor candidates. And please come and learn who they are and what they stand for. And then we have, you know, other forums that each time will announce the next one, but make sure all your Thursday nights reserved till, I think, October 21st. Have a good night. Thanks for being here, and a safe drive home. Bye-bye.